Welcome to my morning meeting of 7/20/2022. I'll come with the roll calls.
Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth Leo.
Here.
Al Kao.
Here.
Julie Pennington.
Here.
Heather Rogers.
Here.
Rick Tenter.
You.
Don Walters.
Here.
Would you please, who joined us by vote on remote? Bonnie, it's on the board here. I'll read the agenda and then we'll start with the first item.
Sorry, Jared, just. Just because you're close at home, can't hear us as well without.
Can you say now?
Actually, yeah.
Come on, oh, Richard's here. Hello, Richard.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry for my tardiness.
We're going with the agenda. One public hearing scheduled for Walpotters on 100 State Street, the O D Special Department. On your general business, we have a request for a minor modification to opportunity way. Another request for a minor modification in 21, 25, and 27 Hancock Street. That will be the second one for that getting addressed. And then a request for a release of covenant also in 21, 25, and 27 Hancock Street. A request for a minor modification of tree loyalty bribe. Approval of minutes from November 2nd. And other updates from the chair and the planning director. We'll start with 100 State Street. They have asked to postpone their application. So we're not even gonna open it, but I do need a motion to well, continue it to January 4th. Ron.
Second.
Alden, second. And as we're on our vote, we have to do a voice roll call. Voting on this motion. Alden?
Yes.
Beth? Yes. Bob?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Richard?
My apologies. Yes.
Bonnie, yes. Okay, so we'll have that on the January 4th agenda. Now we'll go to general business, request for minor modification at two opportunity way.
Jason, are you with us?
I am with you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Alden?
We had in preparation for this some concerns about the numbers on the square footage. So the vice chair and I asked Andy if he would show us a table of the of the approved square footage and the proposed change to square footage to give people context and then Jason will let me go on with the application.
So this is just, this is not a significant application of the office opinion during the chain or government. But if you thought it might be helpful to break down a table, because the original decision way it was written seemed to conflate some of the numbers of the square footage that's happening with one use versus another. So this table was put together, it was put together with, talking with whoever, our zoning administrators, to break it down and clear it. You understand a little bit, or most of the ownership that's binding, probably screen or each square green or assigned each of the substances in the building. And some things that are not calculating in terms of square footage for any use there are some things that. There is also those two major borrowers and allowance or cap of two bare wire completion businesses in this part. And a 100,000 square footage total cap. So just in the sense of what I know you as well, it's only known that there's only 7,000 square feet applying to the metal business right now. So between these two businesses, they're still below 100,000 square feet. But this basically shows a breakdown of the square footage, aside from the uses, adding represented regular credit. And as of present today, we tried to be chosen apples to apples, but again, although there were a little way of playing with those numbers, we're going to assume.
And so we use that table as a reference, but it has a question. Jason, that's the application. Well, I should take it from there.
Yes, thank you. My name's Jason Ollie. I'm the Director of Facilities and Engineering for Happy Valley. I am also the project manager for this project. You know, looking at site plan C101, which should be page four on the packet that I sent over. You know, we have two changes to highlight here. We have a 45 foot by 88 foot addition to the east side of the property for mechanical equipment. Specifically, our chiller plant and irrigation plant will be housed in that structure. We also have a second change is we located the generator on the west side of the property, which will be roughly a 20 foot by 40 foot pad for the generator. Those are the two changes we have on the site plan.
I can stop you for a moment. Andy's.
I have the unfortunate task of having to have 50, we have so many at one time and unfortunately 7, I don't know if it's for your what were you hearing right now. Okay, go right ahead.
All right, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to repeat that so that Andy can point out on the slide the area that you're talking about.
Yeah, no problem. Looking at site plan C101. That should be on page four, Andy. You have that up? Okay, so on the right side of the plan, which is the the east side of the property, there's a 45 foot by 88 foot addition to the building to specifically house our mechanical equipment. Specifically, our chiller plant and irrigation plant. The the other change on the site plan is on the left side of the plan, which is the west side of the facility property. That is a generator roughly. The pad will roughly be about 20 by 40. But we wanted to locate that on the site plan because it it is in the design docs right now. Those are the two changes that we have right now.
In total, as was represented on previous when we look at the table, it's still within the limitations of the entire facility based on approved type, correct?
Correct.
So this is just an addition to what's called office space vertical circulation and capital, not to the was the cultivation or production side, right?
Correct. We are not, we are not exceeding previously approved square footage. We've designed it as such.
Good. That's what we wanted to clarify for the record and all that will be highlighted in the decision. Okay, so let me open it first well. Let me just see if there's any public comment first. Would anyone like to speak on this application? Oh, actually, we don't have to because it's a minor modification. So no. We're gonna go straight to the board for discussion. Any comments, questions? It will have answered or addressed. Who lives there on that? Who's ending up relatively straightforward? Okay?
I had a quick question, if I may.
Oh, Richard and I, I'm so sorry. I keep forgetting you. Thank you.
That's okay. Just a clarification, Jason, from the plan that we just had up. Are you intending on putting some sort of plant, plant shrubbery, what have you, in front of that generator? Given that it's on a very public side?
We haven't gone back and and looked at the landscaping plan again. If that is something that would, if that's something that you would like to see, that will not be a problem.
Well, I don't know that we need to see it. I think we're just raising the question. It looked from that plan that you were doing so, or there may be existing for transformers that are just a little bit south of the generator. As you know, the generator's gonna be quite huge. And I just didn't know if there was some consideration. I'm certainly happy to defer to the other planning board members if they concur or just don't worry about it.
Yeah, the goal is to do as little changes to the landscaping on that side of the building as we can.
I get that. The generator's big, right? I mean, that size pad, it's gonna be pretty tall and very visible. So I'm just taking that into consideration.
Yep.
The good news is that there is some shrubbery there anyway, as you say, and we'll probably take a mini forest to cover this generator from view.
Yeah, it wants to be done in a, Bonnie, it wants to be done in a thoughtful way, but yes, absolutely.
Anyone else still want to add some more training there? We are in industrial park. All right, yes.
Look, there's, there's the landscaping that's shown on this plan. There's a flooding of the pad. Is that landscaping that was approved in the fire site that we were? If I, if I, if I'm not mistaken, the original plan did not have a site plan change in the last meeting. It was actually using a section of the existing building structures or whatever, any section of the buildings were happening at that time. This is essentially all vegetation on the swales and we see the busy party that was in time.
Okay, I'll take a motion to deem the request minor and approve the minor modification in place for two opportunity way.
So move Alden?
Hey, Alden, and the second?
I'll second that.
Heather, thank you. And I'll call a roll on that. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So that is approved. Jason, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.
Okay, you too. So we'll work, well, move on to the first request for a minor modification, 21-27 Hancock Street. This has to do with a proposed easement for tree maintenance. And I believe attorney Adam Costa is ready to comment about it. Thank you.
I am. Thank you, Chair, members of the board. I saw in the newspaper this week, Madam Chair, that you are retiring from your service in the board, so just offer my congratulations. Thanks for your service to the city. So yes, there are three requests or three agenda items before the board this evening. We submitted correspondence back on November 21st that made reference to and described all three. I'm going to address them in the order in which they're on the agenda. And so as was stated a moment ago, the first item on the agenda, the first item I'll address is the issue of street trees. You may recall that when you issued special permits in a definitive subdues and approval for this project, there were two special permit decisions that issued. And in each of those decisions, you included as a condition, a requirement that because there was insufficient space within the public right of way to plant traditional street trees that the city would have access to for purposes of care and maintenance, that those trees be planted on the private property, on the applicant's property adjacent to the street. But for the benefit of the city, that the applicant provide to the city an easement or access. Again, for the purpose of care and maintenance. Specifically, I'll read your condition. It's identical in both the decisions. It says, consistent with the applicable provisions of the new report zoning ordinance and references to sections, the applicant shall include in the condominium documents for both parcels of land an easement to allow the Department of Public Services to access and maintain the proposed trees along Hancock Street since they will not be placed in the existing public right of way. Said provision shall be reviewed and approved by the Director of Planning and Development and proof of proper recording shall be provided to the zoning administrator prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy. Consistent with that condition, back in early November, we submitted to the City Council a proposed easement, a grant of easement for the council's consideration. We have received some initial feedback from staff and in fact, as Director Ford knows and as Mr. Tenter knows, this matter was before the the Planning and Development Committee last evening. I was in attendance, as were they. There have been some murmurings that there may be some concerns among certain counselors about accepting an easement from a private property owner. The initial concern that was raised by staff was that it may place some sort of obligation on the city to maintain these trees. We reworked the language. In fact, we made a first attempt at reworking the language during the report, made a second attempt by reworking the language such that the easement now says very specifically that while the city has a right to access and a right to maintain if it so chooses these trees, that it has no such obligation. It's a right, but not an obligation. With that additional language, we had two members of the subcommittee present last evening, the third member of the committee as he recused himself because of his proximity to the site. Both members supported and recommended with that change in language that the City Council at their meeting on Monday evening accepted easement. That having been said, as I think board members know, we are sort of up against it here. We have a, we're rating on certificate of occupancy. We have closing schedule, multiple closing schedules for the 15th of this month. So knowing that the timing being as such and us not having the ability to get it for the City Council until Monday evening, our first request is simply to make an amendment to the condition, not to eliminate the condition, but to add a sentence at the end of the condition that I read a few moments ago, simply stating that, quote, "In the event the City Council does not approve this easement or acceptance by the city on a report December 12, 2022 meeting, this condition will have no further effect and shall be deemed as a decision." Again, this is not to eliminate the trees. If you've been by the site within the past few days, you'll see the trees are planted, the trees are in. The trees are in, trees will grow, trees will remain in their current locations. But the issue is if the City Council doesn't accept easement, then we as the applicant are sort of stuck between a rock and a hard place. Your conditions of approval, both special permits or that we provide easements, we can't give the easement to a party that doesn't want to accept it. State law requires cities and towns to accept by vote, in the case of a city by a city council, an interest in land. So we made that request. It'll be received favorably on Monday again because we've gotten the recommendation of approval from the committee, but in the event that it's not, we're asking that the condition have no further effect so that we're not obligated to provide easement to the city that it won't accept. Thank you.
So in a preparation meeting, it was one, myself, the vice chair, Tenter, and Andy, our city planner, we discussed this and have an alternate suggestion for it. Instead of the last statement that we suggested in here, the event the City Council does not approve the easement, would that be removed and instead that the previous sentence incorporate and proof of proper recording shall be provided to the zoning administrator prior to the issuance of the fourth certificate of occupancy. So it gives time to the City Council to make its decision and doesn't get into this complicated language of, you know, having the whole easement in our board. And what that adds to that explanation?
Yeah, sure. That, I think that's the, that's a good explanation. I think our concern was that as often, true often happens, the the conditions of an approval aren't really looked at until you get close to a certificate of occupancy or a need for certificate of occupancy. So I understand you're up against a time, a time crunch, but it seems that this would at least give you the opportunity to get your multiple certificate of occupancy certificates of occupancy issued and then, you know, come, if if there is for some reason, I can't imagine why, given the vote last night, there is some, for some reason, some obstacle to the City Council accepting the easement. We could come back to us at a future meeting and ask again, I guess. You know, I would urge you as an attorney with your clients to invest on future clients. They need to look at the conditions of approval before it gets up to a wire. So we don't have to, we don't face this timeline clutch. And I think that should take care of it for you. This is something I would listen to.
Well, I think there may be two things that I could then have shared with you. The first concern I have is, and really what my initial response was going to be is, I think it would be appropriate, maybe, subject to the second comment I'm gonna make, to provide some additional time for the City Council to consider the acceptance of the easement. Obviously, I would like to not have my client be obligated to come back before the board, after the course of the year, if the city could still refuse multiple times over an extended period of time to not accept the easement and would suggest maybe that the last sentence that we proposed remain in, but be tied to that course of the occupancy, that if the city continues to refuse to accept the easement, that at that point, we're simply no longer obligated to provide it. The second concern I have, and this is more sort of putting my conveyancing hat on as a, as a real estate attorney, the concern is, you know, my client has three closing schedule for the 15th for for three of these, these units. These are not condominium units in the sense that we're not dealing with units on shared land that is going to be owned by an association, by trustees. He's conveying the interest in the underlying property. And so when he does that, he's conveying away the very interest in the lands that would be subject to the easement. So I suppose we could try and structure it in such a way that we would reserve to ourselves the easement for purposes of conveying to the city. It just adds an added layer of complication. Once the properties are conveyed away, we no longer control the property that would be subject to the easement, which I think is probably why the condition was structured the way it was in the first place. That prior to the advance of any interest in the land, the party with complete control of the land, the applicant, the developer, would grant the easement. We would need to structure the deeds of conveyance for the individual units on the 15th. I guess to reserve to ourselves the easement interest so that we can then subsequently convey it to the city. So maybe I've convinced myself we can do it, but it does add a layer of complication.
Sounds that way. So just to be clear, the two parcels on the street where this easement would be in place are going to be closed for 15th.
So Madam Chair, I just got a lengthy explanation, but I think the short answer to your question is yes, that the interest, interest will be conveyed in units on the left and units on the right, such that there would be interest in that underlying fee ownership that would be subject to the easement eventually if the city accepts it.
Sorry, folks, still, I guess, but we'll take your comments afterward.
So to be clear, are the two lots or the four?
Now you're gonna get the more complicated answer.
Yeah, we shake ass with the lower court. So if you're looking.
Yeah.
Of course, we like the lower court. That any shake ass, all the really steep dollar. If you're looking at the board of the upper court, what's us 21, 25, that's I believe, that's now because it's, it's got Disney addresses. That's now 25 Hancock and two lower court. There. That's one condo association. Because I was gonna put them together for the T one, it's not many. Right side, 27 Hancock and one lower court. That's another condo association. They're sharing just the lower court there, means they have closings on 25 Hancock, which is unit C and I was all. Two lower court, which unit D is, I'll be able to know it's in the town. And then 27 Hancock. Those are all closing on 15th. So if you look at it technically, the condo association of 25 Hancock with all those two street trees, the condo association of 27 with all those, with all those two street trees. I don't mind having like a restriction on one lower court with a release right now because that's probably one way for them to go. You know what I mean? So I don't know the legal trammage getting there, but I don't talk with that because I'm, I'm understanding the City Council, they pushed it out of that subcommittee. There was a little bit of hovering over there being on seat, on and stuff like. My feeling is they're gonna prove it. Like, who knows? I'm just thinking that. It's going that way and I understand you're going like, all right, I'm not gonna let you get everything. Most of the patterns. So, so the two lots, one on the left and one on the right. Technically, two condo associations with a shared interest.
I think it works for our purposes too.
It works.
It would mean to use Adam's language, the, you know, the interest would be for both condo associations. It's a little clunky because there's only one unit of the four that's, that hasn't closed yet. And that's the quote unquote leverage that we have to make sure this gets sorted out. Either the City Council approves the easement or they don't, we work with you to change the language.
I mean, attorneys, I don't use the attorney, but ultimately, I don't want to have it be like, we're on the 15th and all of a sudden, we have a problem with the D. It's something hanging on. That would be mine, certainly. That would work.
I'm awfully sorry that you had opposing so close to this getting resolved, but we have our processes and procedures and we have to go through this to make sure that everything's lined up.
So I guess I would not support the continued inclusion of that, that new sentence. I would prefer to have the prior issuance of the report. It sounds like that could be done.
So I think where we derive that from you, Madam Chair, is that, that, yes, we, I think that can be resolved and we can make a further effort for a lengthier period of time to allow the City Council to consider, further consider, reconsider the acceptance of the easement. My only point was that it doesn't seem fair to my client and it doesn't necessarily seem like much is achieved to require if after those continued efforts are made and we're on the brink of applying for, seeking a force of your occupancy, you've still been unable to convince the city that we then have to come back and have the same conversation again. I can tell you what I'm gonna say if I'm back here in three weeks or in three months. I'm gonna say the City Council's had it for three weeks or three months. They still have refused to accept it and now we're asking that the condition be strictly. So I have no issue with language in that second to last or the final existing paragraph where it currently references prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, it's saying that the easement will be reported when City Council approval is obtained prior to the issuance of a fourth certificate of occupancy. I would just also like an additional sentence similar to the last one that we proposed that says, in the event that the City Council does not approve this easement or acceptance by the city honored before the issuance of the fourth certificate of occupancy, this condition will have no further effect.
Let me just ask if the City Council has, seems likely, approves it on Friday. That's, is a unanimous recommendation from planning of the vote. We heard one, one council raised concern. But if the City Council approves it on Monday night, does this resolve? Would my, see what the suggestion, suggest a change, being anywhere to any to the fourth, resolve all your issues?
Yes, it would.
And actually, you probably wouldn't even need that change because you're not looking for a certificate of occupancy, a legal approval.
That's great. This, this is a moot point if on Monday evening, the certificate, the, the, the City Council. That's correct. This, this is a moot point. If on Monday evening, the certificate, the, the, uh, the city council approves the, the, the easement acceptance. It's, it's a moot point. We have a certain clock.
So my question to Andy would be. Do we have anything here that talks to the point, speaks to the point of? Should the city council accept it? Because while we're, you know, the way this is worded, it's, you know, like the city council doesn't accept it. Should there be something else in here that captures what?
City council is up on Monday. I don't expect it to be as foreseeable next week as it might have been, but getting the side room, city council. Um, itself would more than, uh, I would expect it to happen, you know, within a couple of days. Uh, given that, uh, pretty quickly, uh, I'd have to prefer the council, obviously, on acceptance, but it, it has been recommended by the committee. Uh, it does have a sponsor as well. Uh, the vice can, you know, uh, have any, uh, debate or, uh, there's a lot of any debate the council might have about it, but. If that expressed also, I think, by, uh, this one council, you know, this, this is pretty, uh, and it's important the city had this to fit. To be able to maintain or is effectively issued free, even if it's, you know, located on private property, because the right way to have it now. So to me, it makes sense to, uh, to, uh, to, you know, uh, alert that, you know, sort of push it out to the, the board here, who will, I think, that certainly gives time. Both of the council, the Senator on the twelve, which we get out of the council, but it seems reasonable to respect that they would, uh, be in a position to prepare the language that's been reviewed and. Uh, you know, sort of consistent with the permit, uh, but also to allow the council, uh, you can take a look at it again, or give for some reason there were, um, significant data that happened in samples.
Okay, so, um, Adam's suggestion here is, um, to, to replace the date December twelfth. And it should be honored before the issuance of the fourth certificate of occupancy. Does that work for?
Think if you want to keep that in.
No, that, that pushes it out to, it pushes the city council to make a decision.
I, I think that's fair, Madam Chair, that if, if we're making Mr. Hinkers' suggested revision to the last sentence as it presently exists. So as to link the issuance of the, um, link the recording of the easement to the fourth certificate of occupancy as was suggested. My company suggestion with that, the sentence we proposed, the new final sentence. Um, we replace that reference to December twelfth, meaning with the reference to the fourth certificate of occupancy to be consistent.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say. So that line would read, in the event the city council does not approve the easement for acceptance by the city. Honor before the issuance of a fourth certificate of occupancy. This condition will have no further effect and shall be deemed removed from the decision.
And I think it would just say honor before application for, for the fourth certificate of occupancy, correct?
Application. All right. That's where we are now. I just want to get this all sorted out before all of you who've been listening very patiently, um, chime in with what you think was appropriate. Well, sorry, we took that over for you, but I don't know how else to do it. I just wanted to make sure that since you listened to all that, you don't hear anything that might be a problem.
I really think the easements are important. Um. I guess, I guess I would like to encourage the city council to accept the easement. And I'm happy to go to the city council, see them happily. I just, I, I don't like to give up on that. That's what I'm saying. This, this, I think, is an important thing that we should be thinking about. When we have street and we, and development is required to provide street trees. And I, it's not, it's not the developer that I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about future property owners. We don't live here now, aren't part of this agreement. And so, uh, the only way we. Make sure that there are street trees here in the future is to have them in public street trees, which, which allows us to maintain and replace. So, you know, I, I would prefer to go ahead without the additional sentence. And we visited, I, I just can't imagine the city council not approving this. And, but I need to advance. Basically give them a, you know, I would like, I would like the city council to, uh. To be able to consider this seriously. And I, again, I don't think that they're going to, uh, disprove it, include something that we want to say is something that we want to have.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take the other point. I, I, I agree with the applicant's. Um, qualification and, uh, I'm the opinion, never say ever. And secondly, you can leave the order to the order chain. Have the worst street to order. So whatever reason, city council does not act timely or doesn't want to act. Uh, I don't see any reason why we need to have the separate thing from the voice again.
Anyone else want to speak? Make sure it's green.
Uh, I'm just curious about the potential timeframe for the fourth certificate of occupancy. You know, we don't know for sure, but I'm, I'm just curious as to how much time that might give city council to get it together to accept it.
I would think that's, that's, that closes like six weeks away, it's hard to think. By then, it should all be flushed out. We're either going to say yes, no, I'm going to imagine. You know, I can't guarantee you're going to say yes, but it's all, I'm actually good.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? All right. I will, I'm asking for a motion to deem the request minor and approve the minor modification. Request as amended tonight.
And, uh, do you mind verifying it tonight? Does it mean the language proposed by the applicant or? And then secondly, if it is approved, obviously it's a point, but it's not approved, assuming that one is, uh. Uh, is asking for, does that mean, um, we've got to do this again some other time?
No, we'll revisit it. If it doesn't pass on this motion, we will revisit the language right away.
Thank you.
Okay. So let me just read the end of, um. The easement retrieve, uh, maintenance along Hancock Street is in the decision. And I'll start at the point where it says, um. Said provision shall be reviewed and approved by the director of planning and development. And proof of proper recording shall be provided to the zoning administrator. Prior to the issuance of the fourth certificate of occupancy. In the event the city council does not approve this easement for acceptance by the city. Honor before an application for the fourth certificate of occupancy. This condition will have no further effect and shall be deemed removed from the decision. That's what we're voting on. May I have a motion?
So.
Thank you, Don. Second? I'll second it. Heather? Samuel Paul Alden?
I recuse myself as I'm in the butter.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather? Yes. Rick? No. Don? Yes. Richard?
Yes.
Yes. We have a vote votes to approve it as, um, as amended.
I do.
This is the request for a minor modification, also for the same, uh, properties. Uh, having to do with. The elements.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
All right, um.
Do you want me to provide an overview?
Well, we had another discussion about this at our meeting and we had thought that we might propose, uh. A different, uh, discussion about inconsistencies between the layout and utilities plan and the approved decision. And the, um, partial as-built plan that was submitted dated November twenty-first. So there's a little, actually there's a little question on that, which is. Maybe we should clear up before we should get into the easement discussion.
So we're happy to do that, Madam Chair. Steve Sawyer, the project engineer is present. We had a present tonight. Uh, we were going to have a present anyway, but particularly when I saw the way they exchanged the emails identifying. The inconsistency and asking questions. I've spoken to my client about that. I've made Mr. Sawyer aware of it, so we'll. Yield the floor to you, but then we're happy to address it once you've, uh, discussed the inconsistencies that are concerning to you.
And can you pull it up, please? Or at least they have, um, pull up to the side. I'll let, I'll let Rick found it, um, because I'm going to let him, uh, describe the concern.
Actually, I'm not sure, um, how much the concern it is. But, um, you look at the approved plan, um, and the back unit, which I guess is one. That it worked, um, that just had a, a landing in the step here. And, um, the, uh, as built, as you see here on the field, it has a concrete wall constructed. That looks like it might be a race patio, a future race patio or something like that. And, um. So I just raised the question as to, uh, how discrepancy like this gets approved or how it requests for, and how it changed. In plans like this, this guy, is this something that, um, happens at the administrative level? Does it have to be approved, uh, by the boards that approved this site plan? Um, the director of the zoning board and the bank board, um, saw this site plan as part of their, um, early approval process. So I just wanted to, really clarify that, figure out what the actual processes are.
But there was also a content issue. We would affect the stormwater, um, plans that are.
That was resolved.
That has been resolved. I haven't seen that.
You did your, Mr. Engineer, we did inquire about that before that.
This is a dangling issue. It's dangling out there because it's just that all of a sudden that, a partial asphalt that will not seem so, um. How do you want to, because it's.
Uh, okay, I'll report the board. Yeah, well, speaking of it, generally speaking, I spoke with Jennifer earlier today. Uh, my understanding and the, of course, we should agree on this is that it may require this whole work to feel completely something, say, the back is open. That is the, uh, what I'm hoping for, so I would say of their, um, per se, but, um, that is a new core tool which focuses on the driver and low lane. Uh, that would, uh, in my opinion, uh, require going back to importance to the formality of a minor modification. Uh, to reconcile the fact that there's something built that doesn't, you know, according to the original plans. Uh, that being said, it doesn't look like there's more added perspective, you know, in the obvious direction, it's something that you opposed. Uh, but it just does seem to be, well, city venture, you know, the output, it's just a reminder that it's more aligned. Cool. Something that is, uh, right now, consistent with the plan in the previous.
Proceeding, we'll be asked to come back to the center.
I'll report it, I don't have that, but that was our statement really today. I don't know, this is, they're very hostile about that since then.
No, very, Madam Chair, I've not had an opportunity to speak to her because these emails came in rather late today. You know, I, I. The only, the only point on which maybe I disagree a bit is, um, whether the nature of this sort of a change triggers the need for, and again, I don't think spoken to Jennifer as of yet. Uh, triggers the need for a modification, even if it's a minor modification, zoning board. Uh, certainly I wouldn't concede, because I see it happen often, uh, both for private and municipal clients. If there's a structural change to something that's been approved, um, by a zoning board, by a planning board. Um, generally the plan is, in this case, a lot of say so, the plan has been incorporated by reference to the approval. And so if you make a structural change, even if it's a minor change, something that rises above the level of real change. Or shifting something a couple of inches doesn't hit ledge, you've got to come back before the board. Um, patios don't qualify as structures even in your zoning. So the question becomes, when you're modifying a patio, if this were a project that had been permitted by way of special permit. Twenty-five years ago and was on its third owner and the, the owner of record and one of the units came out and enlarged their patio, would they be expected to come back to the zoning board? Amend a twenty-five-year-old special permit? I guess if nobody would be watching and they probably wouldn't. Obviously, this is a little different. It's a new project. It's still under construction. If, if it requires minor, minor modification, we'll submit an application for minor modification. Those are generally routine. Um, but I did see the correspondence with Mr. Christensen, where he said that he didn't anticipate this would have an issue from a stormwater perspective. And he provided a fairly lengthy explanation as to why.
Okay, good. That's just what I wanted to clarify. Um, risking any violations of, um. Regulations incorporated into the original decision. Okay, great. Would you like to go ahead with your covenant?
Not for long. Thank you. Uh, so, Madam Chair, thank you. Um, we have made a request. There were conditions of all three of your approvals, the two. Special permits that I made reference to earlier, as well as the definitive subdivision, the subdivision decision. Uh, to the need for a covenant. The covenant was specifically, uh, required in connection with the, the court or lane. Uh, the condition reads, a covenant shall be entered into between the owner or developer and the city. In a form acceptable to the planning board prohibiting the issuance of an occupancy permit until such time as the court or lane has been constructed. In accordance with the approved plan, the output that shall comply with this requirement. And again. I think it's verbatim in the special permit decision that it might be slightly different, uh, in the definitive subdivision decision. So our next two requests are really related one to the other. The first is really just the modification of that condition to allow for. The applicant to provide a different form of surety to the board upon approval. And then, of course, the request. That we're making is to submit a different form of surety in exchange for a payment or release of covenant. Uh, that different form of surety would typically be, you know, bond cash account, something to provide the board and the city with sufficient funds, typically whatever's left. Um, I'm sure you see this often, maybe not with subdivisions, but I see it in many of my communities and many communities which I do work. Developers want to put up, you know, one point five million dollars in cash at the start, so they covenant the development, they get the roadway in, they get the grain. They come back with, there's a hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars worth of work left and they bonded and they have the public review, so they can begin to sell subdivision bonds. We're asking for really the equivalent here. And so to that end, we've been in communication with city staff. Uh, we provided an initial estimate as to what we, what we had left and what we thought the approximate cost of those items would be. Uh, that list was sent out to your, uh, consulting engineer, Mr. Christensen. Uh, he responded, uh, with some comments and some questions and some issues of concern. Um, I have that exchange here. It occurred over the past several days, dating back to last week. Um, in his email of December second, which was Friday, uh, he says, um. Should be noted that the remaining work estimate, referring to the estimate that originally been provided by Mr. Sawyer, is for the work required to complete the approved plan. He then comments on some grading and drainage, drainage issues that he has also corrected. He provides a bit of an explanation in emails as to what those are. He says that, um, there's also a need for an as-built plan and that was not included, the cost of preparation. Uh, in the original estimate that we provided. So he says that the grade, the grading and drainage issues will cost approximately twenty-five thousand dollars. The has-built plan could cost as much as ten thousand dollars. So that was an additional thirty-five thousand onto the original estimate, which was fifty-eight five. Um, that total of ninety-three five. And then he said. Easy brand said, if not his money, uh, listen, round that to a hundred thousand dollars, maybe even, and even six figures. So, uh, so that's fine. Uh, Mr. Sawyer reviewed it. I thought that that was appropriate. Uh, I spoke with my client about it. Um, I don't think he's happy, but says, he says it's acceptable. Um, and so that's what we're requesting that we can provide. Um, that form of surety for a hundred thousand dollars, uh, consistent with the, the breakdown that's now seeing on the screen, which is. The revised estimate that Mr. Sawyer provided, uh, to be consistent with the requests that were made by your consulting engineer. And so that's, that's the last of these two requests is to amend these conditions to allow this to be provided and then to release the covenant.
From the board, thank you. Okay, Mr. Sarin, questions?
Now, this, this release in this.
This is the release, this is the covenant itself. The next discussion is going to work.
Well, actually, so covenant is in subdivision really or whether the special permit? All two.
Special permits and ones. Same. Same, mine and then we So that language would really in addition to the language that's in there, or maybe there's a change. The covenant shall be released in occupancy permits issued upon providing a bond in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars.
That's fine, then I guess I would just add to that, Madam Chair, you know, a bond or cash account to provide flexibility. My client prefers to write a check for a hundred thousand, for the city might prefer to receive the check for a hundred thousand. Or whether it's bonded or the funds are provided, you'll have the money that's available to you.
And that's the reason why I asked, if I'm not mistaken, under MGL, when it's a subdivision, the applicant has the sole right to, to provide either cash or variable credit or a surety bond. In this case, so for the subdivision, personally, I don't think we have, I think I would comment. The only comment I have of the other two special permits is, and I don't necessarily have an issue with that, in my opinion, we're setting precedent. So let's come again, and it's a special permit, not a subdivision. And an applicant said, "Why would I put a surety bond in?" Then I, I, I think we're, we may be giving this arbitrary and gracious. And the reason I mention is, you can talk all day about, oh, surety bond, just as quick as cash, or variable credit, or whatever, it's not. It's an insurance company, try to collect it, and people will tell you, yes, it happened, you have all the venture money. But I've been on the other side many times, destruction industry, it doesn't happen. So simply a word of caution, I, finally, I'll probably go with, so, later on, what was.
So let me just say that this is standard operating procedure for previous situations like this, right, accepting bonds all along.
Well, it's a done point, I agree with the point, I guess, maybe, like, for the board, I don't have a strong, per se, assistance. But I agree with the point that, maybe, which is that, on the subdivision, well, I don't necessarily have the leverage to shoot windows here, in, I guess, I understand that point, cash is king, so to speak, and for my direct, I work, but, you know, just saying. That's preferable from the city's perspective, because essentially you have the city chasing after, you know, folks to provide those funds in order for the bond. As opposed to working on a surety versus having cash, which is, you know, much more logical, the right leverage was someone who wants that one back. So, I agree generally, this is something I can turn out always after something, oh, it's just, and it doesn't, and it doesn't provide that form of leverage, or the fact that you're sort of round about it, doing it in banks and attorneys, you know, it's not.
But are we really worried that this is going to be a problem?
I never
That we should, I'm asking the board, that we should require on the special covenant, Chair?
In my opinion, never say never, but again, subdivision control, we have no discretion. Firstly, if it's needed for special permits outside of subdivision control, I would require either, you know, cash in an as-road account, that's controlled by the city, at least as, 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 you know, things are completed, or they call it variable, full of credit.
Madam Chair, maybe it'll short circuit the discussion a bit, if I could. This is part of the reason why we proposed specifically a cash account or a bond, and we didn't play around with letters of credit or things of that sort, because I've had those experiences myself on that side of the table. Having said that, I've just spoken to my client, we can take the bond off the day of the 10th, certainly. My client's intention is to write a check to the city for the funds to be held in cash, and then release the bond completion improvements.
Perfect. We'll do it. Done. Okay, before we take a vote on this, we have a question.
This is a question, in the case of the subdivision, first, I was saying, do we at the decision, actually, I would say, for the subdivision decision, and we can, we can be more specific for the special permit decision. Perhaps in the subdivision decision, you need to have the, give the options that are required by state law.
So, three, Madam Chair, so I would tell you, if I were counseling the board, that Mr. Walter's comments are correct, and under chapter forty-one, section eighty-one U, the choice of surety is solely the applicant's. Having said that, many boards, some of which I represent, choose to require specific types of sureties in their, in their decisions. You've done that in your decision here. I don't necessarily intend any harm in doing it in a different way by amending it now. If you prefer to say solely in the subdivision decision, that a form of surety consistent with forty-one eighty-one U be provided by the applicant, you could say that instead. If you want to get specific and say specifically that it's going to be a cash account, you've already heard me say on the record that that's what we're going to provide, so we have no preference. Thank you, but I, I would think if you're giving the applicant, as a great, there's, you know, the board is still a little more with the language represented there, consistent and recognition that the applicant's agreed to that more than the subdivision, that would be just how.
All right. Any other questions before I ask for a motion to approve this minor modification? And approve, this is a minor modification, and the minor modification, as a I have a motion for Rick, okay, second. Heather, you know, I don't know. I don't know what you're doing, I'm gonna ask you to repeat all this back to me tomorrow. All right, take a roll call on that. Alden?
I recuse myself.
You, Usel, Beth, yes, Bob?
Yes.
Danny?
Yes.
Heather, yes, Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
So that is true for the content easement language. Finally, the request for the release of the covenant. I'm sorry, that was covenant language, sorry. So I'm just gonna read from this, I'll let, I turn across to
Sure, that's why my presentation, Madam Chair, is brief. So we have a form of release of covenant to be prepared. It's a standard form, you've seen it before, simply stating that the covenant issued of the property is being released by virtue of a vote of the board, and of course, you've got the condition requiring another form of surety. So presumably, before you release to us the release of covenant, you will require proof to be provided to you, the alternative form of surety. So my client's identity provides the check for a hundred thousand dollars in exchange. You hand over the release of covenant, which gets recorded, I have a chain of titles, so that, the new files.
Andy?
My good, I don't think it's a steady issue, but I just, we're going to know, I think, that a draft was provided to the planning board, includes language that might be revised prior to execution by the chair of the board, this is, there was necessarily any problem, no issue with it. But it says that the work that I'm fully committed, I think, on the African justice, just to clarify, because that's not the current status. In this case, there's a cash that would be held, so I just believe that that, the slide was, it didn't do justice before in front of the chair of the civil jury, and then the back, or the certain ones.
And Madam Chair, we could include language that says, you know, have been completed, or an alternate form of surety provided to the board, to the satisfaction of the board for all applicable odds.
Agreed.
So my question is, should the motion, our motion of this reference to a hundred thousand dollars, that was, was the motion included or refused with the recent covenant? Should it say something like, upon receipt of surety?
Yes, I would say upon receipt of, and recognizing, you know, again, if it's, you know, through down the length and speed, that formally covenant be revised as submitted to, to the line of attorney, officer, which is, it had to count for that instead of playing with something that works more
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve the request for a release of covenant upon on receipt of surety and revised language we have discussed tonight. Something to that effect, but it's close enough to capture those two points. And authorize the planning or chairing sign that we need covenant. That's what I need a motion for. Rick? Second? I'm, somebody else.
One second.
That one's counted. All right. Alden?
I recuse myself.
Usel, Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yeah.
Danny?
Yes.
Heather? Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And yes. So, motion varies.
Thank you for, appreciate it.
Our next order of business is the request for a minor modification of Fred Doyle Drive. And we have a lot of people leaving, I hope it brings those to eye. Okay, so I'll ask the applicants to please introduce themselves and present with the help of any visuals that Andy can pull up for us. Good evening, my name is, oh, sorry, you're gonna have to reveal this, pull it down and look what I'm doing, stick it in your face.
Yeah. My name is Judith Burke, I'm the property owner of Fred Doyle, and this is
Well, to receive, I'm the instruct commander, so, if you do it or work. So, pretty much, I'm sure, this bird, like, that is, she has an existing deck, it's twelve foot by twenty-one feet. She'd like for the new season porch on top of, part of it, so on, on twelve to fifteen. Of that, she'd like to turn into a new season porch. There are footings in the ground, with, see, precast footings, big foot bottoms. It would not have to do any, there's no excavating need to be done. It would just come up on the, if you're looking at this picture on the right side, about eight feet, then go over to the roof line, you can see the existing roof line, and it would come over as small slab of the rubble. That's pretty much the, the long shot of what she would like to do.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for a comment with a question, will we have enough information to fully review this application, make a decision?
Question is, some engineer confirmed the footings, because now, where was the deck, you know, certain dead load in the library? Now, when you have the deck, and maybe you also have a roof, you have live load, ice snow loads, and you actually have got more loading up there, and so someone, how do we, that, someone do that?
It wasn't engineered, it wasn't done by an engineer, drawn. I mean, you could have it done by an engineer, but it's pretty, in layman's terms, doesn't layman. It was a precast floor, foot instead of wood, it appears the bottom's on the bottom, it meets passcode.
I, I understand that, you know, I just hate to see a situation where something ever happened, and we truly know, we come back to us and say, well, we're taking forward the board, we didn't ask my question, but, again, certainly, we can lead the portion of what you're looking at. Wonder you're aware of that, owner is, and, and you have to, thank you.
Yeah, I will say, some new development out of Flow Street, the warehouse, the house is a year old. And people have looked at, it's perhaps holding the existing deck, so everything is bolted into the house, and it's the
If I may, yeah. What I'm saying is, and I agree with Josh's point, I think the building division is off as some of the building code would be responsible for verifying the some building, so, to me, there is a mechanism that is necessarily plenty more, there's, there's a valid concern that raises, that would be held on that building department to give the board a full dischange, and that building plan submitted kind of, you know, that will have to be verified, and that's specifically, I thought, that.
But the building department, they would be looking for engineers, would you?
Sure, sure, yeah, so, the question
I, I understand what you're saying, but there's no evidence that, that any of that has been heard. And the foundations are active, that, that, you know, what are the limits of the building, bones, structures? I would think, the building department would be a point of engineering review and a stand warning, and verification of this stuff.
Sure, I would agree with that one hundred percent. I almost speak for the building vision, but I would certainly, I'd say that one hundred percent. I, you know, just to say that, I guess, being, you know, to the chair, but you have enough to, to approve something, probably, that it's stable application, so to speak, you know, we're, obviously, we're going to the building department, building departments, you know, where you're going, things like that, or anything else in their jurisdiction, or their construction side, you know, you have to help the scene, so.
I have a question, and we need to speak in real time. So has a building permit application been filed for this? Start perfectly, building, application started, they sent us this. Was there a denial? Because one of the things I'm concerned about is that you're in the rear yard setback, and I know that, I noticed, I wasn't part of the original rule of the subdivision, but the existing structure is also in that, it just occurred to me that this may require the zoning board review, and I wasn't sure if that was, if if that was part of the determination, was this in a determination that this was the only relief that was required?
It was, I think, determined that this was the only reason required, this is an OSID where the planning board had granted, has the ability to grant a review.
Oh, I see.
Similar to a variance, but through a special permit process, a little free line, or easier. And this is, I think that's why she determined, she did not need to consult on this one, like, a global lot somewhere else, this begins on the west end. But here, just the planning board, the OSID.
Okay.
So, I had, I had run up a hill, said, oh, sorry, more.
Okay, I see, thank you, thank you.
This is a good example of where, I recommend that everybody look at the controlling legislation in formal language, so that you can start to understand what the different types of special permits are, on which they are, the information that they are based on, the regulations they're based on. It's a good way for a specific application to start to learn distinction between, that's basically, residential side and any of those. I ask that question because I'm very surprised that we don't have any visuals whatsoever, no elevations, no or even informal visuals to tell, show us what this is going to look like. Because if I were living on either side, I would want to know what, what this structure is going to do in terms of my view, of my, my unit. And certainly, planning board's point of view, we really do need to see what it's going to look like. And something more than just, you know, a hand-drawn illustration. So, I don't know, does anyone else feel like this is an option? Am I being overly awesome?
No, I agree, Madam Chair, I agree that this is unreg, irregular to have such a loose sketch. I would argue for more defined drawings that have a better way of perceiving and understanding the architecture that's being submitted.
Anyone else, does anyone else?
I, I agree. I agree also.
I just think that we, we can see something that will give us and the butters an opportunity to more than just imagine, but visualize that. And speaking of the butters, I was, found it curious, the language in the letter that was opposed to them, it said, they had been informed, would they, we sign. What we need to know is, the butters do not, as you say, or to put it more positively, butters approve the, the proposal. And so I would recommend that you ask them to sign a different document, that says specifically that they approve the proposed structure that you've got over there. And then it'll be really clean, and everything happens, and this is the room that goes up those, for the cities that those documents are from. So anything else that anybody would like to see from the applicant before we ask for continuation? So, our next meeting is on January So, our next meeting is on January fourth, I don't know. The board's next meeting is on January, would you be prepared to have all of that information available for it? Would you like to go out to the second meeting in January? Would you have some choice, holidays notwithstanding?
So, will we go between square space and divide, I'm just. Do we need to go to the zoning board, now what?
No, 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 I should go back to the next. We want you to come back to this meeting with the visuals. If you can get us some engineering information that will reinforce what you already mentioned informally, that would be great. But the two important things for us, because we know the engineering information will come through the building permit process, are the, what it's, what it's going to look like. And the letters from the abutters says, we agree or approve the proposed structure that we're going to build on the back of your home.
If I could just, about the process between element, you can on the open dock system, which I've heard a process online, it's generally, I think, expanded some of this. The plan discussion is that the hands got uploaded, here, you can basically upload the document to that, that will show that updated set of drawings. If you talk to Caitlin in the office, on the point of development, we can provide you essentially samples, again, to the board's question here, things that are, you know, done by architects, where it's shown very clearly, those improvements. They can give you samples of prior plans, it doesn't have to be exact set, you know, or I can tell that, but it does give an idea of what the board's working for. And then kind of keep that up, so we come back here, know everything we need, on the elevation sheets, and on a site plan that shows a lot, and where this is in there, just to, yeah.
Okay, so I will take a motion to continue this application to January fourth.
So, will Alden?
Alden and second, I'm gone. Hello, Alden?
Yes.
Beth? Yes. Amy?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Richard?
Yes.
Hi, Bonnie, yes, so they'll, they will see you on January fourth.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I have approval minutes for November second. I'll take motion to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Alden's? Second?
Second.
Beth? In terms of edits, Caitlin's learning her way, and Rick and I have helped her, I know, with some of the formatting, the wording. And if anyone else did submit anything, did anyone else submit anything, or have anything you want to bring up tonight, in terms of, of content? Just help her along as much as we can, so please do read them, and if you see anything with content blogs anywhere. Be submitting that for her, or bringing it up to the board, which will. So, we will consider this approval minutes as a menu. And I'll take the role on. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Richard?
Sorry, yes.
I, yes, okay, so the minutes, that are approved. So now, we have updates from the chair, the planning director, Andy, one thing on the agenda for us. Discussion of department obligations and input, I think you better clarify what you're talking about.
Sure, thanks, and I, I asked, I have that, I thought it was you, during the meeting. This issue came up, and I think we're just, like, most, like, basically, I should treat the situation, because we had some background back and forth with these things, but. Long story short, you know, permitting is very complicated, I'm not going to go into that, but permits, permits are complicated. In, in the regular, like, some of the areas, there is before, it's used, or, and sometimes, this board is pressed by applicants, who rush, you know, Google or something, if you're trying to work on. I would, you try, by the way, since I started working here, one of the changes that they're trying to make, done for the planning board, and right now, of course. Is to try to help on draft and conditions, and then assuming for you, so you don't have to start, you know, strategy, that's a start, as comprehensive as possible. Obviously, there's always something to be improved upon, but try to draft those in advance, that's how, and that's why you see draft findings, and we're going to staff the board, draft conditions are, are current, for you. For consideration, because that's why you speed that up and make it very, you know, fun done. But what happens sometimes is you see applicants, or rushing to get something approved, and so, they're asking you to close out tonight, and they're asking you to sometimes adapt your condition applied, aggressive issue, and then the way is for. Address based on that, like, meeting, so, the board does its best, you know, where our best, you know, who knows, and adapt there. Here, in the case of the handbacks, the true situation, we've got, I think, a work that I'm finding here, tonight, that just by example, what that came up here was, turning lead, when she was like, you know, you. She had included language, and they're saying, the city's all getting paid in streams, and I, and I said, I don't think that's actually, the board was attending there, she was having to leave that into the decision. As was written, but it wasn't a hundred percent, the board wasn't saying explicitly, it's not an obligation. So, my point here is just that the board can't be expected, especially involved in the board, you know, although some of you are professionals, since you're working with the field badge, with a lot of experience, and other work, and all that. You obviously can't expect everyone to be told this, but, to basically just summary, review, and summary for a question that came up with my one of the counselors, it was understandable, it's. Why do we end up with these problems sometimes, where something seems like, you know, not the perfect situation, or, you know, the visual, and that's because. You know, there, there, for instance, in that discussion, was discussed, why, why does the board just continue to hear it again, and give the language perfectly fun done? And, and I tried to explain that this is the reality to deal with, is that it's battles in the act of work, permit process is better in labor all the time. The applicant's pressing to get a quote, or the actual permit process, they're the ones that are saying, we should try to do something here, and then they, you know, they're coming back and going, saying, well, we need to adjust this. That's partly because the applicant, but asking the worst way for a, currently, to know, and the board to try to adapt to them, and the rest of us says. Here, there's sometimes, he's a deep before they've been other departments, and so here, what I tried to do, in, in fact, with the turn of being, was just clarify that. Yes, it was required for easement, but that does not mean, every, we did it, that this is an obligation to maintain by trees. In, in lieu of that, she adjusted the language, and, and it turned possibly out that, the language we adjusted here, it was helpful to make it explicit here. That it was a right from the city's part, to maintain it, without obligation, we want to see, here, rust from the planning board, along with the board. By way of, it makes sense, in context, that we want to see it rust upon the city as an obligation for other departments, we had not got any confirmation from what we do. Get any confirmation from, if they were actually responsible, actually, you know, otherwise, some of those persons, having the option to do so. So, it's just, it's one of those things, we had some investigation on Cody Barland, the sidewalk, where the applicant was the right to approvals, they said, add a sidewalk for your request. But they hadn't allowed time for it, and they were rushing to go, they don't have that right, so, they wouldn't, didn't allow enough time for us to vet the sidewalk, and traffic improvements for the crosswalk near the building. It didn't actually provide a true connection across those, in that location, and that was one of the concerns that was raised, I don't know, further due, talking to the Department of Public Services. That again, a question, something powerful, because the city that had to do some improvements across the street, effectively, in order to solve that process. So here, the solution, in part, might have been, you know, save the applicant, but you might need a continuance here, if you're going to give us a sidewalk connection. If you, you can't expect us to close tonight, and say, if your sidewalk out to nowhere, and solve that problem, you need to come back to us, to show us that it's a proper crossing of both streets. And the only way to do that is to have a continuance, and get a revised plan, or any confirmation, city officials, if they also do this, you know, and have to do that. The applicants don't always want to, you know, allow time for that, because it means extending their right hearing, I don't know if it speaks out of words, definitely. And that's the question you want to deal with, is trying to now tell those, like, how long do we spend in the permit process, if something, I don't know, if you make that a process. Versus trying to adapt, or maintain conditions that are, a lot of the world, like, if someone happens to act, or specific incidents, and we get after it, but. Try to coordinate, and try and participate in, and make any assumption, for instance, you're making any assumption about what are the departments that I can do. Or that if this occurs, I'm going to try to, that's possible, running around, you know, freedom, so. Same questions on the, is anybody wanting to flag, just the fact that, as we're drafting special conditions, and we should be thinking about, does this, is this assumed in place of obligation, anybody? Have you done it, with parties, if I can get on something, you know, Department of Public Services, crossing, or sidewalk, or something like, you know, it might. Ooh, let's get a little feedback, or approve of something, if it takes more time, I realize the applicant's level is not very answered, but. Sometimes that gives a better result, you know, the day, and results must not just follow around later on, and that's just something, sometimes not changing, no, no, how much farther in. And that is what I added to this, thinking about, like, others.
Yeah, there's history that goes back several years, outside of individual applications. And that is, was perception, and sometimes the reality, that, the CBA and the planning board were being told what to do, on the app. And, I think. We, we corrected that, we've been very clear, when we felt that they were pushing us on something, and this is a particular situation. That Andy referred to, that we, you know, got tonight, also had a lot, not a lot, but, you know, more recent years. So I guess my messages don't feel like, just because they've got a, they've got a deadline, that we have to affect Kate, to compromise our statements. And. There's nothing that says that we have to admit when there was pressure coming out. And I just think we're doing a whole lot better at it, and first, the planning office, Andy can push back. But it's better if board members do it, better, not just the chair, or, you know, one of the people, or anybody to. On Zen and says, now, we're not ready to make this decision, we need to do it whatever. I just feel encouraged, and so, do what you know is best.
And I think there were two different things you raised, but that, during the, those, might have to, so. And I know that there have, there used to be times when, we want to, very disturbing to, where the developer came in the last night, and said. I can't do what I said I was going to do, this is still, the planning board needs all pressure to improve it, but, and that's a long, but we. I think that we, that you're, you're pointing about not being pressured to act, if they're not ready, is, is very important. Second part, which is after the approval, and then somebody comes, and they've got closing, they want you, us to act in an unusual way. Just to move the closing deadline, is something that, you know, I feel they should be brought up enough to, to manage the project. But if they can't be brought up enough to manage the project, I wonder if there's a way to open them, to send periodic reminders, automatic reminders, saying. You've got these conditions that are under approval, remember them, you know, if, if, I, I would look ahead, if you had to do. If we set something up, and opened up, so, every month, something went out to the developer, saying, don't forget, you've got a new municipal council. And they get eleven in a row, then they come to us the week before it closes, and say, you can say, no, forget it. Because, because you've been warned a lot of times, I wonder if that's possible, you know, because, that, you know, it's just like babysitting a toddler, but, that's the way these developers work.
I, I agree, all right, with the chair, vice chair, it's the same time that, you know, they've recovered here, it's round. And it's not to say that I, I don't have any arbitrary reasons for going, you know, whether or not, or, you know, quote or not. But whether or something's, it may matter, you know, in this case, the applicant did have a fair amount of time to come into the line, to settle this debt with the council. It was a self, you know, you only created, you know, a deadline or a rough, they're closing, you know, they rushed, essentially, and put a bunch of copies, to the office, the parent office, and my office. Because they had just had a discussion with the general, about how to get a sign on the occupancies, and realized that they had to close that wood, and whether that's on the developer, the attorney, doesn't matter, it's going, they owe that. And they were essentially creating a scramble, everybody go off, to your office, city council, and planning board here, trying to scramble around, modifying, saying, we had plenty of time to do that. I, I don't think that's actually fair to, only the parties involved, it's not, it's disrespectful, no matter time, like, you have to try, trying to do what's right in the city. So I, I do think it's important to be able, you know, sometimes you have to say no, you have to say, well, it requires you more time to get this right. And it's sometimes better to do that upfront, than, you know, the problem that life was all there on, just because they're in a hurry, and. Bill, the argument that you get, you know, that, well, we've represented, Bill, Bill will characterize it one way or another way, that, you know, the last, you know, the pedantic argument, like. Here, that trees with lessons, there's opens one, actually, that come in, and we run, run a lot earlier, and not even this one, this year. As to the online, we can officially effectively do that right now, we expect to be able to do something like that better in the future. The problem primarily is just that, because every condition, you know, we, it, part of it's waiting to open up to act more future, which say there are some explaining, things, 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 all those things. Part of it's the fact that it doesn't violate the main work, it just got the, depending on how specific we're being about the reminders, we don't do that now. I don't think that, you know, we should take that on, sort of, liability responsibility for doing that, I'm saying, there's something, you know, who have. Plenty of under, involved developments, should be able to handle these things, deadlines expressed in two thousand and one, twenty four one, and that's time to come back here. There's always why I don't think we have to do that, however, we certainly will, we have to add that, you know, throughout each event, going forward, when the dog has that flexibility, plus, so, we're going to push away.
Do you have a list, are you making a list of, like, special permits, the site plans, that company closed up?
We're working on how to best sort of tagulate that on an automated way, so in the past, we need to have something, we have spreadsheets, something where it's, you know, it's been. What we're trying to, sort of, allow it to is, it really hurt me to clear it out, and, and be able to see the category, and so, so. We do, it is in the system, but it isn't a spreadsheet, different, in the office, it's actually, we're using now the open dock system to see where those things are. And you can see essentially now, in some of this, we stand on the middle side, but, the applicant is able to step into the room, he's done sign offs, who hasn't, and, and they can get a notification, that there's, he's invited to the sign off. Well, you didn't, you know, pay it back, or you didn't revise something, or address something, the one department had to sort of. We, we're trying to set up steps now, and even things have been a little bit, spending, you know, in terms of, I believe, there. And I don't think they've, there are some improvements before that as well, but the, what we've had here now is actually, we're trying to make sure the sign offs are done in the right sequence, so. You don't have to accidentally go with something before it's got the proper sign off, and required by the board, or, you know. We try to make sure those things don't happen, because I know, certain party, by time, were, complaints about, you know, permits, or board permits, and their condition, obviously, would be respected, and the firm, building department. Will do a lot of this, and so, there's been a much more appreciation of that, and most of the, there's an understanding that, you know, those are inherent requirements for that little permit side of things. Whereas in the past, they have been less, well, this will force, so that's actually part of the reason why, since I was creating, so we mentioned in the vision. Was to basically separate this, well, frankly, it's too much, too much to handle, with one version, to go over those several tools, in a different, areas of work anyway. But here, it's kind of, because we have, I think it actually is more, more than one person, and it would effectively over time, with everything that's going on. But it allows us to make sure that someone's actually monitoring those conditions, and making a generate voice, and, well, it'd be nice to kind of go, and, and check in with everybody where they are. It's probably not realistic in our handling, so we try to automate what we can, and certainly, that permits are coming up, general, you know, the rest of us, and our respective roles. I'll leave with those permits, and second one, you should check that lots on this one, and here, you saw, you know, we can actually dance, things that we can scramble around on. You know, applicants sometimes have time to wrestle, saying, whether or not maybe, so, you know, they manage that, you saw, the Cody Bar, we saw them in that, last year, we saw, who was building, with a sidewalk, usually. But again, it's not, I don't think it issues those, you know, I wouldn't think of this, but, but that is, it's unfortunate, for some, that situation, with the strangle, and so I think, I agree with the general point of the chair, that I might still make, which is. You know, you know, use your judgment, but, you know, with us, feel free to, at times, you know, you know, hold back and say, you know, this is something we're working on, or this is something we want to address, or, or, or work on.
Want to be serious about, what you.
Oh, yes.
I, I'm not going to be here to remind you.
So, we're going to have a vacancy in offices, after, after December thirty first. So our first meeting is January fourth, and that would be election of all offices, so chair, vice chair, and third. And so, I would encourage you, if you are interested in serving one of those offices, to contact me between now and then. And also, if you're interested in not serving, you definitely know you don't want to do this, you could also, you know, you don't have to, but, just so I have a sense of who might be your. Who might be your self nominated or nominated for any of the offices, uh, against January, we're the first order of the business. Oh, yes, sir. So, uh, remember for the time of the fellowship, yes?
Yes, uh, so at this point, I just got to be clear, I think we'll not be able to go in on the twelfth of December, however, we'll be able to go in on the first of January. Uh, sorry, this is the event of the membership, uh, and I know the chair, like, only wants to be heard of it. Um, that piece, it will mobilize for the city council, uh, January, and then a lot of the usual classes, so some of you will be, uh, sent back to the council when they have a question for the board members. I imagine, you know, whoever's the chair or vice chair at that point, they can, uh, attend those to that council meeting or special just to make sure they understand what was, uh, who published it. How that was the board, and so what was supported, uh, uh, yeah, we've already prepared, it's all right to bet, uh, while you're together. Uh, we have language we've gone back and forth over a couple of times, we're exploring very much that as well. Um, would why I to, uh, have language that satisfies, if you, and this is partly because it is just making this, and it's changing the type of transition that goes from the nine members to seven. Uh, so at any rate, there's back and forth, there's two events to drive the general orders and the board orders, uh, together, and that will be mobilized. Uh, I would also expect sometime in January, possibly based on, uh, I'd say, there may be a revising again, I don't know, so I think that's, uh, I also. So this board, I guess, have another joint hearing to, uh, weigh on that. They want to just sort of dust up on the, uh, you know, avoid that, that's what, you know, like, what if I had a, I had a school proposal. Uh, maybe different, but, you know, I can't say with certainty, but I would imagine that the first, we, January, maybe that you can, or at least point of view, I'm writing it down. In that, um, uh, there's another, uh, round of those old events.
So, uh, with respect to the change of the membership, uh, just as a reminder, this is to change the membership of the board from nine. Regular members, with seven regular members and two associate members. And the purpose of that is so that we don't need to have, well, two thirties, but we don't have six, we don't need six votes for a special permit, you only five votes. So in, in the event of a, uh. An absence of a regular member or profit of interest refusal, uh, uh, or vacancy. The, uh, one or more of the associate members could be appointed to fill in, to sit on a special permit quota. The intent of that is really to, uh, avoid any unglued remains, or applicant has to postpone because they don't feel that. Possibly implying members to vote on, uh, the, uh, matter. Uh, with that, uh, the way the, uh, the ordinance is written. It says that the board, the vacancies will not be filled, uh, until the board, until one hundred of the board members is reduced to seven. So we're starting out the year that we, um, and so, I guess I would say I'm not encouraging anybody in, in any particular way. But if you were to be interested in being an associate member rather than a regular member. You'd want to start thinking about making, submitting a resignation, I guess, a resignation as a regular member, an application to be an associate member. About the time that we're getting to the second reading of the, uh, of the, of the ordinances. It's just, and I'll remind you of that again, uh, in January. But if it goes to, if it goes to the first possibility of January, I guess it would be at the tenth, is that what it is, or is it the?
Uh, sorry.
First.
They have it posted right now.
Yeah, so how do you want, right?
Uh, I would imagine it's a nine.
Yeah, so then you might possibly even act on it if you have a plan in general.
It is, it's possible if they haven't been meeting and are under any questions or expectations or adjustments for any reason, but if you don't, then that, uh, we're a hundred percent. Uh, that is definitely not ready to go, I should be careful.
So just, just to clarify, the way the wording is, it says upon resignation or term expiration. A member, um, you have the choice, and not the way to your expiring.
You can play.
From what you were saying, besides, I listened to you, I realized, yeah, of course, as soon as it's put into place, you can resign and become an associate member, but. If there's still, oh, that's right, to take it down to seven members, and you, and you immediately eligible, we, somebody. The board would be in a position to have one or two associate members at that time because of the rising thing from the first, who then wants to become a sensible.
Well, well, I could, uh, offer a thought. So, can you, what is the associate member though? Are they not voting unless they need to vote?
That's right.
So they're asking meetings, they sit here, but they're more silent unless there's an absence, but.
You can, you can certainly participate by, uh, it's just that the, the only, the only time that an associate member would actually vote. Would be when needed because of a vacancy and only for a special permit. Uh, I was hoping to make it, uh, possible for all types of words that the term under state law we can. So, so, so just for a special. And again, the idea is not to reduce anybody's, um, participation in any way or form, but just to make it possible for a vote to go again with the regular members.
It doesn't really pre you up on the first and third. It doesn't pre you up, but it also eliminates you, although you can participate. If something is important to you, you have to sit your lips if it's called attendance.
Well, you can say, you can just not, it's gonna be, go do anything you want, say anything you want. You just are not called on to vote, but your name would not come up on the ballot.
Right, but if something's important to you, then I'll say you might watch it go in a different direction without feeling like you.
I'm not expecting it, I'm not necessarily expecting anybody in the public number to do that. I just wanted to say that if you're interested in it.
Okay.
And it could be a, a way, I, we, we all learn in the job here, so it could be a way for, for easier.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And I, and I just to be very clear, uh, I think typically, typically the rule for this type of situation is. A non-voting member, an associate member, based on all the regular members present. A non-voting member can speak through the entire meeting up to the point where a motion is made. Then when the motion is made, it needs to be done, that's when, you know.
Okay, and can I, so you don't know, an associate member would necessarily know in the beginning of the matter, then they're going to be voting on that. It's just if that night, somebody's asked, then, and attention the whole time.
So it's written, it's the under, there was somebody who, you know, regular, Kevin.
Yeah.
If I, if I may, this is very similar to what was, had a Boston Landmarks Commission. There were nine voting members, but there were actually twelve members of, uh, the commission. Three were the associates, and so it just helped from, uh, making sure there was enough critical mass to attend. To be able to have votes, be able to go through, and those three associate members wouldn't know until we showed up, you know, and then be like, oh. Tonight's vote, it's gonna count, and otherwise, to your point, we can provide input, uh, up until the time that the motion's made and then not vote.
The other side of the point is, you look at an agenda item like, uh, an agenda tonight, and you knew that. The public hearing was gonna be postponed and everything else was minor. And it was gonna be determined pretty much tonight, they actually would get the night off. And so there is some rules there. Uh, but to Rick's point, if you knew that it was not attendance.
Well, on, on tonight's agenda, there was only one special permit. And we knew, if we, if we knew that that special permit, you knew that that special permit was going to be continued, there'd be nothing on here that was to say, no. You could always talk, but you don't, you wouldn't vote on it, therefore, you could take the, you could take the night off. Not you, the associate.
But, but unless it's one of those, he's saying you're.
Unless it comes to be something, you know, that, that you're very concerned about and you want to have your voice heard, even though you aren't voting. Right, but there could be, you know, a situation where you wouldn't need to show up because your vote wouldn't be foreign that night. Um, and all of this is in terms of. The, oh, I know, let me say something else about what Rick was saying. If, um, the scenario is that everybody stays on the board. And the next person to resign or doesn't ask to be reappointed disappears, then you're down to seven members. And associate members could be recruited at that point. And maybe, and that's where the learning starts. I mean, you all are, for better or for worse, been on the board long enough to learn. At least how to learn and how to spend your time preparing the meetings, but. Um, if two associate members were added, who have never been on the board. That's where the opportunity is to watch and learn and test out their voices someone, um, except for the time when they actually have.
Yeah, and I just wanted to confirm with, with what you just said is that you're not gonna look for an alternative, uh, until you get a second.
Until you get down to second, your board comes down to second, absolutely, but that could happen. If a current member wants to resign and, and buy from, uh, as an alternate.
Right.
Associate, sorry.
Madam Chair, may I just add one more color commentary to this? With the Boston Landmarks Commission, the associates, they were expected to attend all meetings. In the eyes of everyone, they're full-time, you know, landmarks, commissioner members, but they just simply couldn't vote. But they, learning curve, attendance, awareness, it was an expectation and they showed up and it just was, it was a numbers game. If we didn't have enough regular members, we needed their votes. Thankfully, they were there, or at least who came. And all that, but that was the only distinction, otherwise they were all in, fully committed.
That's a good one, just my comment could continue, this sort of, well, it's a light role and you can come if you want to or not, depending on what's on that night. You're absolutely right, you're a full-fledged member in the sense that you have a responsibility. But if you can't make it for meetings, it's easier to get out than if you're a full member.
Hey, I was just gonna say also, also there's a big thing, because, uh, you know, maybe you would be up, numbers line, then you can get to the last meeting now, which is very important. And, um, you go like this one needle, so it's, it's a better reason as well to make every step of that, uh, as possible. Because meaning, because meaning that ideally, you know, like I said, you want everybody all of, you know, nine hundred and two here, uh, so that it's longer, it can always be everything.
It's also not a life sentence, that's the other part of it, right? As, if I'm an associate, at some point I can have the expectation or hope that I'll get bumped up into permanent member status. I've, you know, paid my dues, as it were.
That's a really good point, we're not scurrying around, as we are now, to find a replacement. And, you know, I have begged and done everything I could to get people to stay on until they were replaced. Sometimes it was possible and other times it wasn't. So that's a, that's another, it's probably part of our cover memo that says, twenty sixteen council. That it's where it makes much more of a smooth transition to bring an associate on as a, as a, as a, as a, as a, as a.
Okay, anything else we need to discuss tonight?
Good question.
Yeah.
So, uh, as, we have two daily markets, who is building on your agenda for January fourth and seventh? Can we continue specifically to that point, I'm sorry?
Uh, no, I, I, I haven't actually been able to look back to split the last, they, uh, January, in July, and I, it's like the, um, your visit will be full of apartment situation. I think it's also a question that we face, I don't know whether that, you know, I'm. But, um, I believe that this because they're ready to come back.
So, Nigel, it's, it's, they're likely to come back.
That's our understanding right now.
It's a modification.
That modification.
And then we also have the one tonight, going.
They're not carried.
And it's ready for most of.
Uh, well, you, you've also had a stage.
Oh, yeah, the first one.
So, uh, so, before this, I guess, just saying.
Oh, yeah.
Um, but, uh, yeah, you know, obviously, you know, all praise, you know, I would, but, uh, right now we have a whole vision.
And I think that one thing is because this next meeting was the fourth. You're likely to be sending out our information a little bit earlier, so we don't get a.
Yeah, good point, uh, yeah, so, uh, we'll effectively have to send it out a little earlier than goal, uh, obviously we'll go there, considering our standing here, I could go through one. Um, also under that's created, because, you know, the technical information had to be a little bit of that time. So, um, going back to the block, just somebody got early, we're out, we're out, we're out, we're out, but it, uh, you don't have.
Except that with, uh, one hundred State Street, um, it'd be good to read the background, especially with the circle of commission report. Because that's what they've done delay, they're gonna come in when it's designed. We want to have that background and see how they, how they, um, taken consideration of the circle, we should say that.
Glad we watched you adjourn.
So who?
Hey.
For, I second, I just would like to say, on behalf of all the planning board members, you trust to be much more helpful than I will be, but, uh. Our heartfelt thanks for inspiring work and devotion, dedication, uh, I think second to that. In the, in what you've accomplished for these, anyway, I don't know about that.
And I'll call it all, Holden?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, Bob?
Yeah.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Yes.
Ronnie, yes. We are adjourned, thank you.